Any derogatory, abusive, or threatening statements will not be permitted. The chair will immediately rule such conduct out of order, and after appropriate warning,
...took advantage of, at the time, the state was paying 100% for those audits. And at that time, they were offering 75% if we implemented any of the improvements that were recommended. We still have that audit, it's still valid today. As of just a couple of months ago, former City Manager Jack Tally and myself, we're discussing with Sylvania and also a couple of other companies. It's called the Energy Savings Improvement Program. And we have met with Gary in the past as well. Gary pretty much introduces us to that, but we were already on that. A lot of these improvements, we've taken on ourselves. The way that program works is, they come in with one shot, they do a further, more thorough audit than was done before, and they make specific recommendations, as Rebecca stated. And they show you that you don't have to outlay anything, they have special debt forgiveness or debt repayment programs where the money that you save pays off the debt, there's a break even over a certain amount of time. So you still pay the same amount for a certain amount of years, but then after that is when you realize the savings. It could be anywhere from seven to 12, law allows maximum 15 years. So we are definitely still looking into that, especially for the sewer plant, which is our largest.
Cool. Hi.
When you get them in, maybe you can have a look at the sign.
Robert Weiner, Madison Avenue. At the very first council meeting, Councilmember Kendall brought up the fact that people in the city hall should have badges. And I said, what a great idea. This is something simple, could be fixed, great for everybody. And tonight, when he asked the question, Mr. Nuccio said, we're working on it. This is something that I thought was a two-week project at the most, and an answer of, we're working on it, is just a disgraceful answer to me on something that seems to be so simple, so important, and it's just another example of not following up, not getting things done, and just saying, we're working on it. And I don't accept answers that we're working on it, on something that I think is so simple. Thank you.
Thank you. And you weren't here last night, but time clocks have been ordered. So we were working on that.
I was talking about the badge.
No, 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 but it was another thing that was always asked every council meeting by Jerry, when are we going to get time clocks, when are we going to get badges? So sometimes, it does take a little while, but give us a little bit of time. Some things do take a little bit of time. Thank you.
Arnold Fall, Habor, Asbury Park. Mayor, Council. I'm just going to bring up the past a little bit, because it's been on my mind. Carter Sackman, how much does he still owe us? Number two, the allegation of the $400,000 misappropriated or overpayment to the phone company, which we could really use, have we resolved that? Number three, I have a question on the Springwood Park, about the $407,000 that supposedly was already spent. I'd like to get a breakdown of where that was spent and how it was spent. And if we've been approved by the city finance officer to move forward to bid with him holding the purse strings. There's no use of going out to bid on a park if we're not going to have the funds in the city budget to cover it until we're reimbursed from the county. So I think that's just something, instead of spinning our wheels, we need to figure out where the funds are coming from to get the contract started before we get reimbursed from the county's grant money. Thank you.
That's all his questions, so he's looking for answers.
Carter Sackman, I just had a conversation with him yesterday. My understanding is, is that from our tax collective, it might still be a payment of $50,000. They're recalculating the last payment that he made. In regards to the phone issue, that's something I'll clarify with Ricky Gars.
Thank you.
All right, Springwood Ave. I'm not aware that 750,000 was already spent. I don't think it's that much.
No, I didn't say that.
Okay, I misunderstood.
No. At the last meeting, Mr. Kuna said that $407,000 has already been spent on the park. That doesn't come from the 750 from the county grant, that's separate. So I'd like to just know how we spent $407,000 on a vacant lot. I mean...
Sweet playground there. You have a full breakdown? Yes, I provide a full breakdown to both CFO and Council. I can provide that, that's a public document, has a full breakdown of that. But off the top of my head, we put in the playground, kind of surfacing, so there was $107,000 soft cost for the engineering. Playground alone was 130, that's 230 right there. And there was acquisition costs, 115, I believe. So we're almost there. So I can get that.
No, thanks, Joe. I just, I mean, so, in reality, what's left, what's the final cost going to be, taking, is it another 1.5 million on top of the 400 we've already spent?
It's not that clear. I'll break, I'll give you the memo.
Okay.
I don't recall off the top of my head, but I know that we're going to bid this week.
And, okay, where did the 407 come from?
It came from Affordable Housing and Community Initiative funds that were deposited years ago as part of the waterfront redevelopment agreement by Asbury Partners.
And is there any funds left in there?
Yes, there is. And that's actually going to go towards, to your second question about Springwood Park. Again, CFO has the actual firm liquidity, as far as that's concerned, but between those funds and grant line, we are covered.
Okay.
Based on the base bid, if we go out to bid with the Council members, we'll make a decision on that, who gets the numbers.
Maybe we can make a motion, have the CFO come in, maybe two days a week or three, so that we can, you know, maybe have somebody controlling the funds. Thank you.
Joe, question. And I think it's kind of what Arnold's asking to pique my curiosity. So the county's going to reimburse us the 750 when we're done. So do we have the money lined up, we're going to go out to bid, do we have the money lined up to start, if we go out to bid, I think it's supposed to be tomorrow or something, and then we're going to accept bids, and we give a contract out, do we have the money in place to start, or are we going to have to bond then? Should we be bonding now, or what?
I don't believe there will be bonding. This is more of a question for the CFO, but I believe there is a method of liquidity, this is what I was referring to. But as far as the project being ready to bid, it will be bid.
Okay, but can we make sure that there's a process of money being able, so, I don't want to go out and, we go to bid, and, oh, guess what, we have no money, and the county's not paying us back after the project's ready, so let's not go out to bid if we don't have the money. Let's go out to bid, but let's make, somebody guarantee us we have the money to pull this off quick.
Yeah, I will have a conversation with CFO tomorrow, I'm sure, because he's the one who's going to allow me to actually put it in the paper.
And don't we, it's my recollection that we have over $200,000 in CDBG funding designated for the Springwood Ave.
I think 150.
Okay. It could be 150. And I'm not suggesting that's going to finish the park, I'm just saying, there are funds, there are some, there are some funds available.
Correct. And that's also in that memo.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Rita Moreno. Sounds like everybody's trying to save money, and I found a way, too. Mr. Nuccio, I was wondering, do you know how much comp time we owe to the people that get comp time? Do you have any idea about how much that money is?
Off the top of my head, no.
I would assume it's a moving number.
Each of the departments.
Okay. Do you have a list?
I'd have to get that breakdown from a personnel team.
Okay, but do you have a list of every employee that's entitled to comp time?
We would have a list of collective bargaining agreements, yes, so we would have a list of who has comp time on his books.
Okay. And who keeps that record?
The Personnel Department, Mary P. Talley.
She keeps the record?
Payroll supervisor.
Can I get a copy of all that? Of the comp time? I'd like to see that. And the escrow accounts, too. Who keeps track of that?
Escrow accounts, we have a town that's run by the Finance Department.
They do all of them?
Yes.
Do you know offhand how many there are?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Well, I'd like to know that, too. The thing of it is, this comp time is out of control, when you see what people are getting when they retire. And there has to be, you were a brand-new council, you got a brand-new government, and you have to change a lot of things, and that's one of them. You have to put a cap on comp time. In the ad that you run on the website, you're looking for a new city manager, and you're looking for a new city clerk, but on the bottom of the ad, it says, and you might be required to work at night at meetings. I don't see that happening without people getting paid. I think if you're a salaried employee, and you know you are, you have to attend the meetings that go with your job. They're not hourly paid, nobody gets...
The clerk does not get comp time for attending meetings. Manager doesn't get comp time for attending meetings. These are not, those are not union employees. The people who get the comp time are people that are in collective bargaining agreements.
Well, that's almost the whole city, isn't it?
Majority of the employees in the city, yes.
Yes. I mean, you might not get it, because you have to attend, but you probably have comp time, too.
I have comp time.
That's what I'm saying. There's got to be a cap put on this. I mean, this is a brand-new council. You should really meet with the commissioners that changed that new government, because it's important that you know that there's a lot of things you could do in this new government that you don't know about. You're doing the same old thing. You send out 15 pink slips, and what happened? Did anybody get laid off? No?
15 pink slips.
Isn't that what happened? It was on...
Pink slips.
Huh?
No one received pink slips.
Well, the rice notice, or whatever, that you had...
The rice notice is not a pink slip.
Well, whatever.
The rice notice basically is a notification to employees that they will be talking about, that the council will be talking in a productive session about various positions and employees. And the employees, they have a right to say whether they want it held in a public session or a private session.
Yeah.
They're not pink slips, they're not layoff notices.
Well, isn't that what was supposed to happen with the new form of government? Weren't you supposed to change all the boards, too?
Well, all the boards were changed, they were all abolished. Come January 1st of 2015, all unclassified positions within the city were abolished, and all the boards and commissions were also abolished.
Okay.
The council has diligently been working to reappoint people to the boards and the commissions.
What about the employees?
Unclassified positions, those individuals in unclassified positions, they have been given temporary appointments pending reappointments.
So, am I going to get the information I want?
You want to know about the escrow accounts.
Yeah, and I want to know about the comp time.
Comp time is a personnel issue.
Personnel issue? Are you talking about the payroll supervisor that doesn't have anybody to supervise? Is that what you're talking about?
No, it's a personnel issue as far as the amount of comp time employee asks.
Oh, I don't think so. That's, taxpayers pay that, they're entitled to know. They know what their salaries are. It's on the website, what everybody makes.
Different issue, Rita.
Well, I don't think...
Open record.
Okay.
Hello, Council, and Mayor, good evening, everybody here. I think we have to thank two taxpayers for doing a job that we pay lawyers to do. Pam and Jim devoted a lot of time to do the research that we pay lots of money to lawyers for. I think they deserve applause, I think they really do.
(applause).
Okay. Now, roving meetings, no matter what kind they are, have a heavy impact on residential neighborhoods. That's why we have a municipal parking lot, and that's why we have the city council chambers. And to have a roving meeting creates a safety issue also, and people don't know where the meetings are.
What's the safety issue, Jerry?
Just walking around in dark streets, maybe. It's an impact on residential neighborhood. Okay? If you really want to get more people here, serve free food, you'll get a lot of people. Okay? Other towns have four-way stop streets. There's many towns, if you really want to slow down the traffic on Fourth Avenue and Third Avenue and other streets, install four-way traffic signs. You won't need speed bumps, and as Warner brought up, yellow line, double yellow lines devalue a neighborhood. No one wants to buy a house when they see two double lines on the street. Okay? The other thing is, we had two past city managers, one that sat on his hand, and the other one that was more worried about fluff. I've been asking for the last 10 or 12 years for GPS systems on all the vehicles, decals, house numbers, and the time clock. You got the time clock for the taxpayers, but now you have to direct Tony Nuccio to do bi-weekly meetings for monthly reports. We need someone to be accountable why there's not house numbers on all the properties. We need to have someone accountable why we don't have decals on all the vehicles and GPS. If big companies think it's important to have GPS systems on the cars for their employees, us taxpayers should have the same quality control that big companies do. I mentioned last night about the Ocean Grove fire, but I remember in 2003, on Third Avenue in the 600 block, they were doing something with the water pipes, or whatever it was, and they didn't have enough water pressure to put out the one-house fire, and it wound up burning two other houses. I think it was like six, I live at 611, so maybe it was 606 or 608, the three houses burned down. But one lady lost $100,000 because her insurance didn't cover the repairs of the house. And then, we need someone to be held responsible for doing the audit on pilot and tax evasion program, because we can't have a repeat of what happened to Sackman Carter with the Steinbeck building. It's just not fair to the taxpayers, who actually do pay their taxes on time. And then, one more thing, I asked Terry Reedy, eight years, seven years, six years, I got tired of asking, I wanted to see a timeline on a critical path of what was happening on the beachfront. What projects were lined up? When they're going to happen? Because we have vacant lots there, and they may stay vacant for another 10 years, because the redevelopment agreement says they have 30 years to do a build-out. And you know what they're going to do on the 29th year? Well, we couldn't make it. And the thing about the church, they got the land for free, give it back to the city for free, they can remove the building, we'll want the land back. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I got to say, Mr. Nuccio was not at last night's meeting, but Mr. Nuccio sent out email this morning to the Director of Code, that he copied Council on, saying, I want your code inspectors getting the signs, the numbers up on the houses. So that is being addressed. And again, he was not here last night, but at 6:30 this morning, that email went out.
I appreciate it, by the way.
Okay.
But thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry. GPS, we're looking to several different companies. The new police cars will have them. I mean, the police cars now do have them. We're looking to expand citywide. I don't know how many city vehicles don't have decals on them. I don't think any. I think they all do have decals.
I think there's four.
Mr. Mayor, correct. About six months ago, we did a poll of the entire city, ordered more decals, posted on every vehicle that was required to have one. There was just a few exceptions. I think some were police and some were social services. I think everything else is caught up. We haven't caught...
I don't even want to tell you what, the cell phones have GPS. That's where you know where everybody is, too.
Okay. Thank you, Jerry.
Jim Henry, 514 Sixth Avenue. I'd just like to, excuse me, I'd just like to correct Jerry. Pam deserves the credit for the research, not me. She did the job. Going back to the issue of the sign at Sunset Park, on page one of your bill list by the budget account, the last item on that page indicates that there's a bill of $38.59 being paid to Verizon, dealing with that sign. Is that what's holding this up? I don't know the answer to that, but, and on the next page, page two, last item on page two of the same document, how do you bid on a project to get 15, over $1,500 for oil change and lube job on a police vehicle? Can I bid on that? I'd do that all day.
Are you done?
Yes. I don't want, John, I don't want to get into going over the budget for every meeting.
No, no, no.
I'll leave that to Rita, but...
But I can answer your questions.
I'm done.
Okay. Note that Verizon bill is not holding up that sign. I mean, if you were here last night, you heard the dumbest answer I ever heard in my life. The company came and didn't have the right wrench. I was like, you know, that was the dumbest answer I ever heard in my life. And I got it, totally. But no, that bill is for Verizon for something else. We go out to bid on repair for vehicles. I saw the same thing you saw. I went into finance today, what finance does, which I kind of have a problem with, they'll put down the first two words of what they did, and then it was other things, where new rotors, new this, new everything, and it wasn't just, when I saw $1,500 for an oil change, I said the same thing you said. I said, I want to go in this business. It was basically redoing a whole motor. It was, the work was justified, and again, the city went out to bid, Amco was the low bidder to do the repairs, it was sent there properly, the repairs were done, it was much more than an oil change.
John, I assumed that to be the case, and I do assume...
I didn't assume it, I went and looked at the bill.
Well, I assumed it was rebuilding the transmission or something of that nature, but I thought I'd just point it out, because if it were not, I'd like to bid.
No, Jim, I totally agree with you, and that's one thing I'm going to say about this council.
About the chair?
Everybody, with the chair?
Yeah, I have the chair circled, Rita, I have the same issue. I said, $700 chairs, next week.
And two months ago, there was a chair for $1,000. And you know what it was? It was for eight chairs, but they just put down chair and a number, so, but...
And business cards, but I don't want to get into...
Okay, but this council is doing more looking at any bills and claims than any previous council in 200 years, and we will continue to do that, and we picked up the same ones you picked up on.
Denise Richardson, Ridge Avenue. Just a comment and a suggestion as far as the snow removal, that they put the foam blast out a little sooner. It was kind of late, snow was already on the streets, and, you know, kind of moving after the snow was there. The other thing is, I didn't see a city truck, but I did see Neptune come down my street at least four and five times. And he also allowed me to move my vehicle and then plow in front of my house. So I don't know if you had a shared agreement with Neptune, but I truly thanked Neptune.
Joe?
I didn't know Neptune was there, but...
No, I know we don't have a shared agreement, but if you'd like to, do you know the address?
I do know the address, but I know for a fact Ridge Avenue was clear just as satisfactory as the other street. I apologize that, Ms. Richardson, you can see our trucks out there, but he actually had the army trucks, those trucks, fully solely stationed for the entire day after, Tuesday morning on, in the Southwest Squadron. I drove it for about 10 hours myself, so I know for a fact. As far as Neptune, we do have a shared service agreement, but we did not hold him on.
No, same as like, we used to go across the Sunset Avenue Bridge, and of course, we wouldn't pick up the plow. Same as like, you go on the Main Street, if you're making a left turn, you're not going to pick up the plow, you're going to knock it down. So Neptune was very nice.
He went all the way through Asbury, all the way down into Neptune again. He went from Neptune all the way down into Neptune. So, I mean, I thanked him, I appreciate it.
I appreciate that, too. But, Joe, just next door, let's make sure, complaints been made that Ridge wasn't plowed?
No, I didn't say that.
No, wasn't plowed?
I misunderstood, I thought you meant Ridge wasn't, I apologize.
Officially, I was going to say.
It wasn't plowed, I'm just saying, I did see Asbury trucks, I saw Neptune's trucks.
Okay, so, great.
And I just say, I said you do the foam blast a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would, to follow up with what Denise said, so, the foam blast a little earlier, and like, if we get a unified message, right, so it was late, the foam blast there, and then two days later, when we had that little ice storm that came, like, again, we didn't get anything from the city.
So the only counter, I would say, is, one, it was a unified message on the first storm, because we had an OEM meeting and we had bullets. Anything that could have been cut out from Code Red, and I'm all for doing Code Red earlier, I think we did it at 7:00, we debated between 5:00 or 7:00. Code Red is on a limited amount of time, we pay per second, so we limit it to 30, 30 seconds to a minute. So getting the same message on Code Red may not be as easy as doing an email blast. As for the second storm, I agree. The first storm, I think we got nothing but compliments on our communications, because we had Twitter, we had Facebook, we had the website, we had Code Red, and we had Nixle. The second storm, or I guess it was an ice storm, that was the one that we didn't, we should have coordinated, we could have coordinated efforts for, I don't think we even thought to do it for that one. But for the first one, the message was unified, we all had the same bullets, and the bullets were, move your car to the north.
Right, yes, yes.
We had the same bullets, everything you listened to, it was the exact same message.
Yeah.
And it might have been a little bit late, and it was, but it was a crazy day, you know, we started off, the day before, we're getting 24 inches, and then it started changing, and then it's being downgraded, downgraded, so like, you know, it was like, we're damned if we do, we're damned if we don't, what time do we put it out? Because of the changing forecasts, you know, thank goodness, we only got eight inches, but you know, we were prepared for the 24, and the timing of when the message went out was because of varying forecasts.
And the only other thing I would say with the...
And you can say, then sorry, and you can put the foam blasts out saying, in anticipation of a storm, park your cars on the east side.
Right, and we were also looking at people that work, are they going to be home at 4:00, are they going to be home at like 5:00?
Yeah, there was a thought process, I appreciate the feedback, but there was a thought process in doing it later, particularly also because we knew we were only doing one because of the cost, based by that point on the predictions, which were much, much less. We obviously would have done more if we'd gotten the two feet. But the thought was, we're only doing one, we want to hit people after work, because people at work, we assume we hit them via the website, Twitter, Facebook, or some sort of social media. Anyway, that's fine, I have no problem taking that.
No.
Is Code Red the only option?
No, we have Nixle.
No, is there other phone options that are cheaper?
Nixle, Nixle offers a phone option. We have to transition from Code Red to Nixle, which we have not done successfully.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn public session?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are on to item G, the approval of the January 12th work session minute meeting. Minutes, couldn't fit that one.
Move it.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
I'm staying right here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Good. We are on to item H, consent agenda resolutions. All matters listed on the consent agenda are presented collectively to the city council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are deemed to be routine in nature, and there will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council members as to a particular item included, then said item shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. We have item 2015-71, approving compensation payment to Stephen M.K., retirement. 2015-72, authorizing transfer of appropriation in the fiscal year 2014 budget. 2015-73, authorizing temporary appropriations for 2015. 2015-74, authorizing submission of grant applications, Project Safe Neighborhoods. 2015-75, approving raffle license for the epilepsy foundation. 2015-76, approving a raffle license for Jack and Jill, Inc., Ocean County, chapter. 2015-77, approving a raffle license for the Mount Carmel Church. 2015-78, approving special events as outlined on February 10th, 2015. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to resolution 2015-47, a resolution authorizing the advertisement for requests for repulsals for marketing event management firms to create, market, and operate the 25th Asbury Park Jazz Festival to be held on June 27th, 28th, 2015, in Sunset Park.
What's the, when do people have to return those, Tony? What's the, when are, when do people have to return those, Tony?
Sorry?
When's the return date? Like, what's the deadline?
I think that was next, next week.
Actually, I think we ought to check the local public contracts law on that. It may be 20 days from the date of advertisement. So, as soon as you approve this, it'll be advertised, and the due date for proposals will be at some point after 20 days.
Okay.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-79, resolution authorizing the payment of bills in the amount of $2,779,982. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-80, resolution...
I think you skipped, did you skip two?
Yeah, I skipped two.
Melody, I think you might have skipped 66 and 67. That's okay, don't worry about it.
Um, 66 is to be carried.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
Um, 67 is appointing individuals to...
Oh, done, got it, got it.
The, the only thing there, and I just wanna bring it to the public's attention, that I was informed today that there's a vacancy on the housing authority. So, anybody interested in serving on the housing authority should submit an application to the city clerk. Thank you, that's it.
Resolution 2015-80, a resolution, a resolution authorizing the payment of payroll in the amount of $845,632.48. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution 2015-81, a resolution of the City of Asbury Park petitioning the county of Monmouth for relief in reconstructing Fourth Avenue from Ridge Avenue to Memorial Drive due to debilitating effects of the automobile and commercial vehicular traffic detoured, therefore, by the county's ongoing Sunset Bridge replacement project.
Move it.
Second.
And this would be in the revised format per your discussion earlier this evening during the work session.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
2015-82, a resolution of the City of Asbury Park, a resolution authorizing the advertisement for competitive bids for the construction of the Springwood Park project.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-83, appointing McManam, Scotland &amp; Valman LLC to serve as redevelopment council for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional legal services associated therewith.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-84, appointing Rutterman &amp; Glickman, P.C., to serve as labor council for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional legal services associated therewith.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-85, appointing Archer &amp; Grenear, P.C., to serve as bond council for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional legal services associated therewith.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-86, referring proposed amendments to the city's land development regulations specifically concerning the establishment of an application procedure and escrow requirement for amendments to the redevelopment plan, to the planning board for review and comment pursuant to the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember, Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to the introduction of ordinances. Our first introduction is for ordinance number 2015-3, amending and supplementing sections 7-27 entitled "Loading Zones" of Chapter 7 entitled "Traffic of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Asbury Park."
Move it.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
And the public hearing for this, I, would be March 11th with our advertisement. Ordinance number 2015-04, amending and supplementing Chapter 12 entitled "Building and Housing of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Asbury Park."
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
And the public hearing for this ordinance would also be on March 11th.
Move, move it up.
Move it up.
Move it up, and the city will pay for the advertising.
Okay, I will put this in the...
Please.
Okay.
So, that public hearing will be held on the 25th, February 25th. And mayor and council, as you know, I have a conflict of interest regarding the next matter, so I'm gonna excuse myself.
Just so everybody knows, the reason we're moving that first reading, second reading up, it's an ordinance to increase the construction fees in the city, so the quicker we do it, the quicker we take in more money, so why delay it? So, we're moving it up, and it costs us another $50 to advertise it in the press. When somebody else asks to do it, we make them pay the money. So, the city will pay $50 to take in hundreds of thousands. So, that's the reason it was moved up.
We are on to public hearings. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 2015-1?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Okay, it is, ordinance adopting an amendment to the Main Street redevelopment plan relating[1616.38]